Student services are going to be pretty quick.
Well, I heard that story. I don't know where you're going with that yet. Did you see that this April was... That was so... She brought orange ones around. That was just so...
Microphone on, please? Mr. Kennedy, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, good afternoon. And before I get started, I want to say, I think Mrs. Crowell, Amy Crowell was being a little bit modest earlier. It was a team effort, but she did actually gather everybody's information and pull it together. So we want to give her credit for that. My purpose this afternoon is to just give you a general update on the status of technology in our school system. I want to start out by saying thank you to our school board and really to Mrs. Hemler, our superintendent and our leadership, for providing a lot of support and resources to provide digital tools to our students. That takes vision, it takes being proactive, and you certainly have been that. I'm not really going to go into all this detail and read every slide, but when we talk about technology, you can't forget classroom technology. And I believe our classrooms are fairly well-equipped with instructional technology and tools to help our teachers and students. I will point out that one of the biggest things on all this list is a transition to a digital video distribution in our schools. So we really are getting away from that coax in the wall and distribution amplifiers throughout the school and really televisions and that kind of thing, moving more toward what's called IPTV, which is video over our network. And so students can see that on their devices, teachers can see that on their computers, can project that in classrooms. So we actually are piloting that in a few schools and learning about it and hope to expand that to the future. And what that means is this, during the morning show, rather than turning on television, they'll look at their computers and see that content that way. A lot of detail, we've got a lot of computers in our school district, roughly 78, 7900 student computers. You add them all up, 9,500-plus computers and 280 servers. A lot of technology in our school district to help us as well as to support, frankly. We replaced staff and teacher computers last year. We hope to begin replacing the six-year-old student computers this coming year, depending on how discussion with the capital budget goes. So you'll be seeing more of that. Bandwidth, that shows the bandwidth currently in our locations. You may not realize, we spend over $37,000 a month or almost $450,000 a year on bandwidth. That's an expensive bill. About 80%, I checked this morning, I had approximately 78%. Currently, 80% of that cost is reimbursed through the E-Rate program, which is a good thing. But that gigabit internet circuit you see there, 1,000 megabytes, at face value, that's $10,200 a month you pay for that one circuit only, so it's expensive.
Dr. Gettis, so how is the checks and balances going on that cost reimbursements through the E-Rate program?
Very well. I mean, we... I think Mr. Chamberlain is responsible. I'd say I think Mr. Chamberlain is responsible for E-Rate. But because of our experience with the E-Rate program in the past, we've got a lot of controls in place to monitor that very closely, so... And basically...
We do our own applications.
Yeah, we don't air it out.
We know what we're applying for, so we don't expect that to be... What happened before was that this offender that was a contract in the school district, he applied for the E-Rate program.
So we have a high level of confidence on Mr. Dodd that's being tracked. A little history, I should have followed Amy's, we even done more of a graph, but this is just... Quick and dirty, you get the idea. And just a matter of a short amount of time, our internet circuit has increased tenfold because of demand. We monitor that, my staff looks at it, there's a graph that's up all the time in there, our network area, and we look at percent utilization. I can tell you this, that come fall of this coming year, we will be at 2 gigabit internet circuit, just because of need. The more devices we put on our network, the more our bandwidth needs to increase. Now, this next slide's got a little lot of detail and it's hard to see, but what I want to point out is this. The state published standards based on the State Educational Technology Directors Association a couple of years ago, May 2012. They came out with a report, this state, this group called the State Educational Technology Directors Association, and it was called Bandwidth Initiative. And basically, they delineated bandwidth they felt like should be in our schools K through 12 nationwide. And I can tell you, big numbers. For example, according to their numbers, our internet circuit in 1450 should have been 1.4. And if you follow those numbers out through 1718, it's in an incredible 14 gigabit, a thousand... A gigabyte per thousand students. So I tell you, that would be...
And then funding will come with that expectation.
Right. You heard me say, the gigabit we have now costs $10,200 a month. I can't even get a quote on that big number. So... And it's not just me, you know, technology directors around the state just think it's kind of far-fetched. Yeah, it would be nice, but the thing is, we monitor our bandwidth and so we don't have the luxury of paying for something we're not using or, you know, don't need. So certainly our bandwidth will be increasing. They also have, but it's going to be based on our need and based on our ability to afford it.
Are they factoring in managed bandwidth? Because, I mean, you... One of the ways I know our district has accomplished that is through your management of that.
Yeah.
And, you know, dialing certain things up and other ones down at different times.
That's very, very important because it is such an expensive resource, you've got to manage it. So we can do what's called packet shaping, so we can get certain traffic priorities at certain times, you know, for testing. But if you looked at their numbers, and I will go into a lot of detail, they've got big numbers even for schools on the network side. And so, you know, we're approaching some of those numbers, but we don't feel like we need to do that quite yet. But we monitor that. You may or may not know, we have two data centers. Our primary data center is the Technology Resource Center. Secondary data center is in Building 300 here in Inverness. We have redundancy, so that means if something were to fail in one data center, it could theoretically hopefully fail over to the other without interrupting the service. And so that is something we think about. But both of those places have diesel generators outside the building as well as large battery backup units inside the building to address our need. And those two data centers support all of the information systems in our school district. And you may or may not know, we've got, you know, disaster recovery plans in place. Part of that includes a weekly visit from a company called Iron Mountain in like a secure van. And he comes in with a little briefcase and it's like swap, you know, they drop one and pick one up. And so our backups are taken off-site weekly to an underground bunker that's very secure in another place. So that's going to be a minimal disaster.
And that's in addition to the redundancy that you have in servers?
In servers, as well as...
Our locations, I was thinking.
Yep, and as well as the, I think Mr. Chamberlain also has a contingency with Skyward to do a hot site on their end. So we can take our data and very quickly be up and running again in any event.
Like an attack?
Yeah. One-to-one initiative, again, to say we're in our fourth year of our one-to-one initiative. I will reiterate that that initiative is driven by our transition to digital curriculum. It's not going to be cool to keep up with adjutanties, it's to put tools in the hands of students where they can look at their content, interact, and create, and grow educationally through that tool.
Dr. Gettis, we talked about that science, for example, is going to be a digital adoption, or an adoption coming up. Is that going to be looked at then as digital print? You know, we've done different things where that hybrids...
Without question. Currently, we're doing social studies, Mr. Kennedy, this year for implementation next year. We're doing science adoption next year for implementation the following year. And I can tell you, the digital component is very, very important as we have those conversations. We are now faced with the options of being 100% digital. There are some publishers that, you know, just have 100% digital curriculum, no print pieces, you know, whatsoever, print components. So those are conversations we're having and certainly that's where we're going.
So when we say 50%, though, what's that look like in an adoption? I mean, is that where we say, okay, well, our lower grades haven't had an adoption yet, so we can... You know, we can count that as percentage? Or does that mean that, okay, 25, you know, 10 kids in each classroom will have, you know, print books and 10 kids will have an iPad?
It's almost approaching 100% in terms of that requirement because when we buy content, we purchase stuff from materials, pretty much you're getting digital content as well as print. You know, it used to be back in the day, we'd be buying the textbook and they would throw in digital. Well, now, I don't think it's just to meet this requirement. You're purchasing digital and they'll provide print materials. And so a lot of times it's a classroom set. So if you do a digital adoption, there'll be a classroom set that provides instructional materials, you know, for that particular subject. So yeah, I would say it's 100%. We're buying, there's no, I can't think of any instructional materials other than maybe AP or IB that are not blended. Some of those specialized things you just print on, but even a lot of them have digital content.
And that's just the textbook, that doesn't include, of course, the supplemental materials that are teaching.
So our one-to-one initiative, this was the plan that was presented and that we all agreed on a few years ago. And you can see by the end of that, one line had 12%, 13%, 25%. That was what was being added that year. And the bottom line was the cumulative percentage district-wide. So by the end of 1718, according to this plan, we would have been theoretically 100% digital. And so, as you are aware, because of some financial constraints, capital funding challenges, we revised that plan to a degree. And so you can see this year, 1617, we're addressing 10th grade. That'll put us at approximately 58% district-wide, one-to-one. Next year, 11th grade, and then finally 12th grade in 1819, which would put us at 75%. So there's no pathway to 100% at this point until we figure that out. And so kind of along that line, considerations, and then we can talk about it in a minute if you'd like for sustaining the one-to-one. You know, determine if we can provide devices for grades K through 3, something we want to discuss. And then there's the cost of sustaining the program, the initiative. And so replacing devices that were purchased year one, beginning that 2018, 19, we work and do the next few years. I can say that, you know, the capital budget is a conversation that's ongoing, you know, it's kind of in flux. And so there'll be decisions that have to be made along the way as we look at that capital budget. But right now, the discussion and for planning purposes, I have the replacement cycle for those iPads in there as well as beginning to replace student computers as I discussed earlier in the presentation. And so this is a good summary thought, digital content, connected world here to stay. Maintaining and replacing technology is going to be a continuing challenge for our school district as well as probably every other school district.
Do you foresee that we're going to stay with iPads through all these years or will it be a change?
I think that's a conversation we need to have collectively, you know, there's a lot of good devices out there. District's doing other things, a lot of different options. So I don't think I would ever say, you know, we're going to stay with this one device forever. I think that we need to have a conversation about that.
And Dr. Gettis, I think one of the things that people don't always realize, and the question is, a device regardless of the type of main brand associated with it, is largely the per-unit or per-student cost nearly the same across the board for the level or quality that we need to meet a deployment as we have where a student, we expect that device to last three or four years? I mean, because I see, you know, whether it's an Android device, a Chromebook or others. Actually, probably the most expensive I see is Microsoft at this point. But of the primary ones, the certain, you know, kind of deployment level still seems to be in that $400, $500 range.
Yeah, it's hard to compare, it's funny, apples to apples or apples to oranges because, you know, there are a lot of options, a lot of variations in processor, memory, and battery life and functionality. But I will say that, I was asked a question really about the iPad recently in relation to Chromebook in terms of cost. Well, you can buy probably $100, you know, $150 Chromebooks, but then you have to look at battery life and processor and how much memory. There's a lot of things to look at. And so I tried to get as equivalent as possible in terms of processor and memory and all that. And so we're paying about $374 right now for an iPad Air 2, 32 gig, that's what we can purchase for education. And so a similar Chromebook was in the $250 to $300. So they're very close.
And the problem with the Chromebook is, is it's highly dependent on having an internet connection, which means that there's limited resources with the device unless the student has a Wi-Fi connection at home. And that changes, and it's also not a tablet usually. In those cases, they're a traditional laptop which limits some of the functionality of that device. So that becomes that challenge. I noticed that Samsung, which is probably one of the leaders in Android devices tablet-wise, they're being criticized aside from blowing up complaints. But one of the challenges is that they've gone to a restricted operating system. And so same thing that Apple can criticize for of being closed, they've closed their system because of the challenges they've had with Androids being so hackable. So that becomes, I think, the challenges behind the scenes that your team is going to always struggle with.
Yeah.
Is that discount that we get from Apple when we buy these quantities? I mean, that, at Air 2, what are we looking at retail? Is there any?
They provide a minimal discount on Mr. Dodd, maybe $3.99 versus $3.74, but it's really not much of a discount at all. I mean, they do give a little bit. But that $3.74 price is in quantities of 10. You buy a box of 10, so where might normally be $4,000 you get $3.74.
I think there would be more of a discount for that.
Some of the other considerations, I'm going to talk about this a little bit more when I talk about digital classrooms plan, computer-based testing. You know, ideally, you would have a device that a kid could use to do, you know, what, digital content, do work, create work, be productive, as well as test on. And so that's a dream we're not getting up on, we haven't achieved that yet, but we hope we can one day. Then I think too, as we move on down the road and have this conversation, I really wanted, now that it's been out there a few years, start trying to get feedback from stakeholders, you know, teachers and students, and kind of see where they're at.
And we've got to make sure that when we do that, though, we're actually communicating with people that are utilizing that because we also see that there's some barriers where there's classrooms that aren't adopting and I know that the team in the back are, struggle with a certain segment where they just can't break into those classrooms. So the trouble is, is to say to that group, well, they don't want necessarily always change the way they've been doing the instruction and that's creating some challenges for us. But you know, we go back to, and I asked about science and we brought up social studies. If we're basically at 100% adoption of our curriculum textbooks instructional, we're nowhere close to being able to have 100% one-to-one devices regardless of the name that's associated with it in our plans. And we certainly don't have that, and I know that's what you're bringing up. But we're talking about adoption this year, we're talking about adoption next year, but there's a huge segment including, you know, 11, 12. And one of the places I hear comments all the time are from those elementary school teachers that are saying, we need those devices to be effective teachers right now. And they don't have them. So I don't know how this board is going to address these challenges. There's significant challenges and there's significant dollars.
And what's the monitoring, is there like, an adopted textbook that has a disk to go with it versus just having the disk and having an iPad instead of paying for the textbook? Is there any kind of offsetting there in money?
Is it cheaper one way or the other?
No, they've made it where it's really not much cheaper one way or the other. And they're getting their money. Basically, we're not paying any less for digital content. And so now we have to buy the digital content, paying about the same money. You want the print, paying more.
Well, and it's more, I mean, one of the things that I think when legislators mandate this, one of their justification is, is ultimately it would be cheaper. But the publishers haven't followed that and they haven't provided us with funding for the devices. So the reality is, it's more expensive for us. And that doesn't include funding people like we essentially need in the back on your team that's making sure those hardware is being maintained. So I think it's actually significantly higher.
No.
Whether it's right or wrong, I don't mean it that way, but I'm saying the cost to communities is that it's much more expensive.
Well, for us, it's much more expensive because we have to purchase the same content that we've always had to purchase. Now we have to provide a device to run that content. And I can tell you this, you know, at one time, there was a vision that distance learning was going to revolutionize things and be a lot cheaper. Well, you have instructional designers, subject matter experts, you know, it costs a lot to build courses and provide infrastructure to deliver those courses electronically. And so they realized pretty quickly, no, it's not really saving money, it's going to maybe cost more money to run that kind of a program. So technology is expensive. If I could, I'd like to just transition to the digital classrooms plan. This now is probably in the third or fourth year. It's how the state is funding technology for school districts. And it's trying to help us really determine what's vital and critically important in relation to digital learning, student performance outcomes, and how we measure those things. There's some statutory language that supports the digital classrooms program in great detail. Five areas are there listed, performance outcomes, technology, infrastructure, professional development, digital tools, and online assessment. And there's been a lot of emphasis given this year on online assessment. And basically what the law says, beginning this year, we as a district have to determine what the largest grade is that we'll be testing on FSA at any one time. And we have to have the infrastructure and demonstrate to the state, we have the number of computers to test a whole grade, the largest grade in any particular school at the same time. Now, they're not saying we have to do that, they're saying we have to have the infrastructure to do that. And so basically, starting back in April, kind of knowing this would be coming down the pipe, what we did was, you know, here's what we do, you know, determine the largest grade in the school, determine what computers are available for testing with minimal disruption to the instructional program that actually is in law. And so I actually went out and met with schools face to face. I didn't depend on self-reporting. And I actually have a spreadsheet with room numbers and numbers of computers, you know, for each school that could be loaded to testing. And then we determine how many additional computers they might need. If there aren't or weren't enough to test the whole grade, then the priority for these funds in the eyes of the state was to purchase additional computers. So I can, you can see here, any million was allocated statewide. Every district got half a million. The rest was based on FTE, so Citrus got 233+, for a total of $733,336. And that compares to about $476 that we got last year for technology funding. So you can see the roughly $250,000 increase. And again, you have to prove to the state that you can meet that computer-based test requirement. Otherwise, you have to spend those funds in a priority way on additional computers.
And the computer-based tests, or the computers that are used to test on cannot be assigned to a student anytime, correct?
Yes, they can.
And that's what I think is a fair question that Dr. Dodd's asking because while it can, from a statutory perspective, is it truly practical to say that a one-to-one device at this time can be used for state assessments, meeting all of the state assessment needs?
No.
And is it likely that anytime in the upcoming future will be that a device will be able to do that? Unless there's some, you know, new technology that's created?
Hard to say, you know, we haven't tested anything other than...
But I mean, even the other districts, from my understanding, Chromebook's not doing it. The Androids aren't doing it. I don't know of anyone that's doing it about the... And that's just it, they have to be sanitized, which means that we have to pull them out of students' hands, set them up into a testing assessment piece, and I appreciate Mr. Dodd for that.
You're just asking about computers though, I think, right? Not necessarily tablets?
No, devices, just any device.
Yeah, it's funny, if you take into account devices, tablets, sure, we meet that standard in a big way, but not, you know, with computers. So basically...
And that, though, I think, is part of the problem, is the one statute requires us to provide, and I reiterate this because we continue to get misunderstandings in the public, that we have one statutory law that requires us to provide 50% of our curriculum in a textbook, really something to replace a standard book that a student would take with them, put in their bookbag, and do things like that. We're supposed to meet that mandate unfunded. They're providing us a limited amount of funds to meet a separate mandate that is totally based on assessments, and it's not based on curriculum. And they really not only don't marry up, but they conflict with one another in the classroom. Because in order for us to fund the curriculum needs, we have to do that at the detriment, then, of being able to fund the assessment needs, and then the state comes back to us, hitting us for that. If we, if we fund, and this is where, there are districts that are saying, well, we're going to meet the digital classroom requirement for assessments, and we're going to put on the back burner standards in curriculum, which is not, I believe, the right direction either for students, because now learning is being hurt. The only thing you're doing is, to me, feeding into the assessment, you know, piece. So I don't think there's a perfect answer here. I want to uplift, or lift out, in a positive thing, Dr. Dennis, your team did an excellent job at repurposing last year's teachers' laptops to largely accomplish the state's mandate with very, very limited resources.
Yeah, that's a perfect segue, Mr. Kennedy. We did not plan this, by the way.
No, we didn't.
If you look at this spreadsheet, again, started back in April, what we did was, we looked at every school, determined their largest grade, number of students at that time, we looked at their current computer capacity, and that was in conversation with the school. Again, we have room numbers, numbers of computers. And then we looked at what the difference was between how many students and how many computers they could devote to testing. And then we looked at the number of teacher notebook computers that we recycled, as Mr. Kennedy mentioned. And so that last column gives us a plus or minus. So for example, according to this, Citrus High School had 73 devices more than they needed when you took everything into consideration. You know, number of students, current computer capacity, the difference, how many computers were retrieved, and then, in contrast, Crystal River High School needed 110 computers, after you added all that up, figured it all out, to be able to meet that computer test requirement. So if you look at the very bottom line, we retrieved around 1,118 teacher notebook computers. And so it's very close in terms of how it balanced out with our numbers. Now, I will tell you this, after we retrieved those and started looking at them and cleaning them up, getting them ready, that number's lower because some of them aren't fit for service at this point, just, you know, good for parts. So look at that sheet, and then I want to contrast that with, and again, this is small, I apologize, but this was, these were the numbers given us, to us by the Florida Department of Education, and you can tell that their numbers and our numbers don't quite add up. They based their number of devices on reports that schools provided. And so our schools have a lot of different types of perceptions, or people assisting with that. And so in some cases, those numbers are not correct. They didn't take into account the 1,100 computers that we know that we have available from the recycled teacher computers. And it's interesting, Mr. Kennedy, to know, look, their cost estimate...
That's what I was, I saw.
Absolutely, $229. $229, and I'm thinking, you know, really, what can you get for $229? So...
And what about looking at details?
Um, wait, are they on there?
Yeah.
I don't see them. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think this is number of K-12 students.
Oh, that are signed.
It's not adult students, K-12 students.
This is just their report, then? This has nothing to do with our...
No, no, but what happens is this, I have to prove to the state why our numbers are different, and that our numbers are different, why they're different, how we can account for it. Otherwise, you know, they're going to say you need to spend this much on these additional computers. So we can do that. Now, in this report, there's a mechanism for making adjustments to their numbers, and so I'm in the process of, I've reconciled that.
So how does that work with schools like AES and Cypress Creek, where they're...
I was talking about Cypress Creek.
Yeah, I mean, they're not necessarily...
They're on the list, but they pretty much do their own thing.
But they have to, so if they don't provide, does that impact us, really?
No, it doesn't, no. Now, this very last slide, now, I will say, this is October workshop. On the November regular board meeting, I have on the agenda, we're going to be bringing to you that digital classrooms plan for your approval. It has to be reviewed and approved by the school board prior to submission to the state. And so this is just a budget that's going to be reflective in that plan we're going to be giving in November to review. This is kind of showing you how we're suggesting that money be spent. We are spending some money out of that on student computers for testing. But you'll see, when you get the plan, that's more like 180 to 200 computers versus the big number that the state's going to be using.
The only thing on that plan and on that budget that you're going to have is, I know that a continual issue and challenge is cords, charging cords and charging blocks. And I know that you've tried to work with schools, and schools are trying to work with each other, and I mean, I know it's going to, that part will never change until we have wireless charging. In the meantime, is that part of this budget, the cost in there is what?
You could lump it in the mouse better, as I see that. But that's still low.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that's very low, and I know that means that schools are taking that on.
Yeah, and I think I've shared, you know, I see that as a joint ownership thing, you know, both of us have skin in the game, because we just can't be a free and unlimited resource. They have to take some ownership, terms of management, in making students accountable and responsible. And so we kind of, so we certainly provide for them, I think fairly, but we also expect them to...
Have we discovered or found that if they don't use an Apple-approved cord, does it damage the device or just the cord?
It doesn't really damage the device, it just doesn't work.
That's what I was just going to say. So Mike, the reason why I suggest that or say that is, I know some districts, and we've talked about this in others, and I just can say, I think it's still worth exploring, is not issuing the charging block and the cord with the device and making that part of the students purchasing. Because what's happening with these cords is, they're getting them home, and they're just mixing them in with their own household ones. And so at the end of the school year, they're, you know, it's like the socks to the laundry, you know, one's missing. And unfortunately, the block and the cord alone to replace it as an Apple name ranks $40. But if they went and bought one, they can buy an off-brand all day long at whatever price, and if it breaks or if it fails, then they can both go out and buy another one.
And as we were discussing, we're learning that some of the third parties seem to have Apple's certification.
Yeah, I've got some that work really well, and I've got some that they've got two uses and they can't.
Yeah, so that's an ongoing, definitely an ongoing challenge.
It just would, my hope would be is that if we can eliminate administrators having to spend that time tracking those two pieces down, maybe we could, you know, because there's also a money factor in administrators spending that time doing that.
You know, I'm always available for questions, and please call if I'm...
How often?
Yeah, call and come back.
Thanks, you're most welcome.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have Student Services with Regina and Kit.
I'll let him ask you.
I have a couple of slides I'd like to share with you this evening or this afternoon. The first one is our out-of-school suspension incidents for the last three years. As you can see, it's broken down by levels. We had a nice dip in 14 and 15, and rose slightly in 15 and 16, and 16 and 17 first-quarter results are shown for you as well.
Now, it would look like we're seeing a trend down, maybe.
Any questions before I move on? Why the students were suspended, we have ongoing lists of the reasons that schools were not.
Yes, every nine weeks, I pull the 12 most common incidences, and I share them with the APs, and there's conversation at each one of those AP meetings that I share that with, and we talk about the commonalities of them. And they don't stray too much, they're pretty similar. Inappropriate behavior, some vanity, physical altercation, violation of school rules, bus rules.
Does this have our work on, maybe some interventions for those suspensions reasons?
We do. We have our social workers who work with those students who have repeated suspensions. When they come back, they meet with them, talk with them, and look at reoccurring situations, and we're having some good results with them. This is the third year we've been asking the social workers to do that. And Kit oversees that and meets with the social workers and talks with those social workers every nine weeks after that, too, to see what trends we see.
I've heard that there's a positive element that are recurring, and it was probably setting up so that it's sort of good here.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Our next slide I wanted to share with you is zero tolerance offenses. Again, those four that bring to light are the non-expulsion ones, the expulsion services, services with one year and without services. Again, I've given you the last three years and the information thus far this year. Being board members and making those decisions, I know you're fairly familiar with these And the last slide I'll share with you before I bring my colleague Kit up to share information with you, is bullying and harassment incidences. I've separated them into two categories, the substantiated and the unsubstantiated.
Please send me that copy. Excuse me. Sure. Yes.
Now, when I asked earlier about the cyberbullying, I thought you said that there was, that you are tracking cyberbullying, or?
Cyberbullying is not a separate entity for reporting to the state, but in my department, I have the numbers for those. If you'd like them, I can share that with you. But since it's not a reportable incident to the state, separated from bullying and/or harassment, I didn't provide these numbers for you. They're very few, but I surely can do that if you'd like.
Are they included in these numbers, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then this just includes everything?
Correct. The numbers would not be higher because of that.
The cyberbullying would just be a small portion, since these are already a small number.
And would they be substantiated or unsubstantiated, or some of them?
If memory serves me, very few are substantiated under cyber. That happened on our campus, or that overflowed onto our campus.
And correct me if I'm wrong, just because they're unsubstantiated by our definition, and we have a little definition that's under statute, so it's not to say that we don't say that there's inappropriate behavior, but there's a difference between inappropriate behavior and a substantiated bullying.
Yes, sir.
They would still have the discretion to go to the SROs or the Sheriff's Department, and they can, you know, they can go and deal with that. So they still have the option to deal with it outside of the school district.
I feel very comfortable with sharing it, and it's brought to the school, that is how administration responds. I feel 100%...
It may be inappropriate conduct, you may not like the grace to level of bullying, but maybe with a particular incident, you're still, you're still disciplined, you're disciplined exactly, you know, the best grace and definition of it.
And sometimes I believe you find that, well, one may make a report saying it's bullying, after you've investigated it, you've found out there's some back and forth going on, and then it again goes, and really goes into improper behavior, maybe on both parties.
And that would be your unsubstantiated, with possibly consequences because violation of the code?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Humble?
I'll show you with it. I thought I would make a funny, "Good afternoon." To see if you all need another break before we go over this last slide. I was going to say, this slide should only take us about an hour, so go ahead and take a break if you need to. What is given here is the average weekly absences for the past three years, and then up-to-date of where we are for this year. So really, the trend is, I mean, things have gone up slightly in many of the areas, but down in others such as the Renaissance and Crest. But they're maintaining their own. As you all know, we're doing some different things now with attendance, and, you know, as things kind of get stale and old, we have to move to different things. So hopefully, the initiatives that we're moving forward with now will start to show the attendance, you know, the numbers going back down. But I did figure up, just kind of, you know, randomly, like, at the top, 2015, 16 for elementary, based on the elementary population, that equates to like 266 children. So, you know, across the district. So when you look at it that way, I mean, it's definitely something that we need to track and continue to work on so that more students are more consistently coming to school.
And the fact that our year-to-date is almost as high as those three years?
Yeah, it really kind of goes up and down this period. Like, it'll, like, the beginning of the year, it's, you know, lower, and then we get into the holidays, it kind of peaks again, and then we get into testing in the spring, and then the numbers get kind of good again, like when, you know, graduation and all that. So spikes up and down. For this one, you know, this is year-to-date, we're into the second quarter, so the numbers will start to rise. We did have students that even with those days that we missed, missed extra days. So, but those numbers don't alarm me too much. I mean, they're pretty consistent with what we normally see.
Ms. Humble, you were, I think, out in the schools.
Mm-hmm.
And I say this because you kind of have a greater perspective on this. We changed the policy at the high school level, which I've been in agreement with, by the way, to try and recognize we may not have been accomplishing as much as we have maybe hoped in the policy of exams and needing to have the attendance criteria met. If I'm looking at this data, though, it doesn't seem that either direction, as we suspected, really has a whole, it's not having a whole lot of effect. I hear from the, from the high school world that they seem to have a perception, it's much, much worse. But as I've kind of shared with them, I don't see the trending data as necessarily reflective of that.
I think they may feel it's much, much worse because of the changes that we've had in personnel, where we had the attendance assistance, and then we took some down, excuse me, and then, where the social workers have gotten more involved. And we, you know, the past couple of years, we've kind of tried some different things. So there has been more of the attendance issue brought to the attention of some that in the past, they really weren't as involved with it, I guess is the best way to say it.
Because I don't see the data that says... Because I don't see the data that says we should be necessarily needing to go back to it because it's gotten out of control as a result of that. I would say I totally agree that students being in school is a positive thing and we want them in school so that they, you know, have that opportunity of having the face-to-face time with their teachers. But I don't necessarily think going back in that direction would necessarily accomplish that. And if we do continue to find we need to do something, there may be, I think, other things that you, you or the board could explore that might be more effective at this time than necessarily the direction that we've gone. Is, am I wrong in that?
No, no. And I think that what we are seeing and what we have looked at in the past couple of years is the importance of really buckling down at the elementary and then carrying to the middle. Because we have families and, you know, families, related families, that it's a continual habitual problem. And I think too, with the rise that we've seen with, you know, child abuse, Baker Acts, that type of thing, with some of the dysfunction that we have to deal with and the poverty, for whatever reason, you would think that more of those children would come to school, but that's not always first on their priorities. So we are looking at some other things and predominantly, I mean, if you look at the numbers, the elementary, which normally is where the children are so excited to go to school, their numbers really are not that far off from the high school. So that is where a large bit of our focus is. We've got a new lady from Youth and Family Alternatives that's helping, that I see us moving in the right direction. It's just going to take a little bit of time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humble. No one take the tip of the bird? No?
Yeah. Good job.